With your grace, we will do the same thing again next year. You have in front of you a bag of 25 for you to plant at your neighborhood entrance, or at a highly visible space in your neighborhood where others are not planting. Most of the groups that have picked up, of about 100 groups that have picked up daffodils, have received some of these placards to go on wire sticks right in front of their beds. They don't need any more than to be planted and cared for annually in a very simple manner. The Holland Bulb Company, Dan Zanivan, that sent us the bulbs, has directions inside the bags for you how to do it. Jessica also planted, typed out some directions, and there's also a website for you to submit the pictures when they bloom in the spring. Don't cut them back until they are more than half-dead next spring after blooming, and then they'll come up the following year. That allows them to gather enough nourishment and all the stuff from the sunlight that they need. Also want to thank all of y'all for allowing us to move into the Crump Center. We are thrilled to death with our new location, and we have two closets, one for supplies to check out stuff to people, and one for our other items, and an office that will work out as time progresses. Thank you very much for what you do for the city of Montgomery, and yet happy Thanksgiving to all of y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate what you do, Al. Thank you.
Appreciate you so much.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, before you, items 1 through 10 is your consent agenda if there's any discussion on the contracts.
All right. Any questions? All right. Next item.
Item 11. Mr. President, I think you and I were talking about number three, that we need to make sure we get that date correct before they start advertising.
What was that again?
On number three, we need just to make sure we've got the correct date before we advertise.
Oh, yes. I asked it in the regular council.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 11, 120-day review of Ultra Lounge at 3420 Atlanta Highway.
All right. Mr. Grimes is not here at that time. In the regular meeting, we will have the review, 120-day on the Ultra Lounge.
Item 12, 30-day review of Cooley Social Club, 930 Grove Street.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. President. I actually asked for a vote to revoke the license of this particular location, being that they no longer possess control of this property. It is a state property right now due to some unresolved taxes, and so I'll be asking for a vote to revoke those licenses.
Okay. I think Mr. Cooley is here on item three. Anybody here for item three? Okay, so you guys want to hear what they have to say now?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, sir. You got to do it in the meeting.
Oh, in regular meeting, yeah. We'll talk with you guys in the regular meeting on item number three. All right. Next item.
Item 13, application for a lounge retail Class 1 liquor license doing business is Crush Bar, 79 Commerce Street.
All right. Ms. Johnson, we carry this over.
Oh, yes. Yes, we'll be fine. We'll go ahead and vote for them. I'm okay with it.
All right.
Item 14, resolution appointing William Boyd to the Housing Authority.
All right. As an appointment, Mr. Mitch.
Mr. President, we can discuss it now. I did ask Mr. Boyd to show up to speak for himself because so much is being said, and I do give a man, I do believe in redemption. Something that he did almost 20 years ago is being brought up, which Mr. Boyd has had a pardon for, and this is not the only thing that we have appointed Mr. Boyd to about this council. Only thing that I say to this council that almost every sitting politician has been a part of his parade. We also give to his parade as well. I just hate to fear the feeling that if you have a stain on your record here in the city of Montgomery, that you're well enough to pick up trash, sweep the streets, dig holes, but when it comes to us actually sitting at a table, we actually have a problem with it. So I do ask that Mr. Boyd speak for himself, because the only man that can defend him is himself, so I do ask that he be here at the regular work session, but we can't discuss any discussion that needs to be discussed, Mr. President.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Mitch? All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
15, resolution reappointing Bernice Robertson to the Modern Sewer Board.
All right. Any questions on the point?
Mr. President, once again, it was brought up about the number of years that my appointment has been on, and we have to look at that. We have some appointments that have been on since 1979. We have some appointments that have been on since 1965. We have some appointments that have been on since 1995. So when we talk about age, there's no term on how long that appointment, just like there's no term on this city council. So I believe as long as Charlie sit on here, he's going to appoint whomever that he wants to appoint. So when we talk about age, we have some people been on there before I was born, and before some of the city people, the city council was born. So when we talk about age, we have to look at it across the board, Mr. President. If we want to discuss it, we can discuss it now.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mitch. Item 16, next item.
16, resolution appointing Tamika Miller as part-time municipal judge of the city of Montgomery.
Okay. We'll meet Mr. Tamika in the regular meeting. That's an appointment that we have to approve for a judgeship in the municipal court. So we'll vote it up or down or carry it over, whatever we do in the regular meeting. All right. Next item.
17, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at restricted locations.
All right.
18, resolution designated nuisance abatement agent. 19, resolution declaring authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the council have anything before we get into the work session communication?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
I just want to make corrections on what was said. Maybe two weeks ago, Councilor Johnson said that this council disregarded herself and her constituents that came down here. We put two family dollars in her district, and I want to explain to the public and also some of the employees that work for Montgomery, the city of Montgomery, if a partial is a commercial B2, that means it's retail. The properties that the partials that Ms. Johnson was speaking of, one of them was on B2 in 1979. The other one was commercial B2 in 2001. So what that means is that they did not come in front of this council. This council did not allow those two family dollars within one mile of each other. They was approved in 2020. So I don't want anybody to think, and I read on Facebook that the city council was wrong for allowing two family dollars in North Montgomery. They did not come in front of this city council. We did not allow two family dollars within one mile. So before, I don't know if Charlie was on this council in 2001 when they had a B2, but they did not come in front of this council. So I don't want anybody to think that we are allowing the destruction of any one district, because this is not how this city council operated. This, we have never operated like that. So I just want to make clarity, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mitch. All right. Madam Clerk, over. In our public communication work session roster, we have Mr. Stephen Tears with Montgomery County Humane Society. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good.
Good, Stephen.
Good. I was asked to be here today.
You don't know why?
I got a question, Stephen.
I think it's about vicious dogs or something, but I don't know the specifics, so my apologies.
Stephen, I've got fox, I got some fox in my neighborhood. Do you do anything with those?
No, it's a Department of Conservation would have to handle them, because you have to be a licensed trapper to handle fox.
Thank you.
It's not an easy situation. I'm not sure what they'll do.
I got you.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Tears. I just want to make a point. I've been in contact with Mr. Tears this week. We're working on the ordinance that is set forth by the city about vicious dogs, and we've also looked at Emily's Law with its estate, and so he and I are working together to maybe find some new verbiage and looking at some other ordinances to take care of some of these things that were addressed at last meeting at the 1st of November. So we'll continue to work on that and come up with something that we can all agree on that kind of gives a better handle on some of these dogs that are roaming the neighborhood that are frightening our residents.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr., I guess, since you're here, if you would go ahead and explain just for the public record, when you receive a call about a vicious dog or loose dog, what is the process? I think that's what the public wants to know. We all received an email this week about noise, late-night dogs barking, nuisance, and I think it's been held about your organization. So just explain that process for me, if you would.
Okay, so those are three separate types of calls. Nuisance, according to the city ordinance, is when a call comes in, whether it's excessive barking or destroying property, a dog getting out and chewing up plants and things like that, or smells. They can call us. Our officers will go out, will take the information from the complainant, will go out to the home of the animal owner and attempt to gather all their information, sometimes answer the door, sometimes they don't. But once we're able to obtain that information, we'll inform the dog owner that there's been a complaint, and your example, Mr. Goome, is excessive barking. They have seven days to fix that issue. If they don't, the complainant would come down to the Humane Society, pick up a copy of that nuisance, and file with the municipal court. At that point, it becomes a civil issue, and a judge will make a determination.
Okay.
Stray dogs from the public, if somebody calls in a stray, the dispatcher will take it. Sometimes people are forced to leave a message, but we do dispatch from those as well. They have the option to also do it online, which all officers are able to see. Upon dispatch, it's entered into the system. The officer responds as quick as possible, try to locate the dog. If it's not at the physical address or the block that we are given, they will patrol the one or two streets on either side and attempt to see the animal and then try to capture. If the animal is captured at that time, they're brought to the shelter. If they're unable to, then according to the ordinance, we'll attempt a couple more times and we would set a trap if a private property owner is willing to allow us to set it on their property, because you have to have their permission. If that fails, we'll go on to chemical capture. And it's very similar with a vicious dog. We'll respond. If it's during regular business hours, we'll respond, try to locate the dog, and then it's the same process. Now, if it's after hours, MPD is to dispatch an officer, confirm viciousness, and then they will notify our officer to be in route to capture the dog.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tears. Anyone have any other questions?
I do, Mr. President. Mr. Tears, we had a situation in Forest Hills. We had a vicious dog, and when you guys would come out, tell them they had so many days or something to do with the dog, and then they'd move the dog, and then the dog would come back, and it'd start the whole cycle again. And we kind of went, finally, finally, I think the people didn't pay the rent, and the landlord evicted them, so we were spared. That's probably been about a year ago, but it went back and forth, back and forth with you guys. Can you explain, say if somebody's got a vicious dog, and it's out, and we have an incident, and you, how many, do they get so many days to remove the dog, or tell me what that is?
No, sir. It's viciousness, according to our ordinance and laws, can only be determined by a judge. If we deem the dog to say it has aggressive behavior, and we're able to speak to the owner who says, "Look, I'll just move it out into the county," problem solved. We have no authority to tell someone unless it goes before a judge.
That's what they would do. They'd move it somewhere, then bring it back.
Yeah. We face some of the juggling with some folks, but unless, so if we see the dog out, we can write him a citation and bring the dog in. Unfortunately, the officers have to see the dog at large. Now, we do tell people, if there's a reoccurring issue, the officer doesn't have to sign the dogs running at large. Any citizen can go down and sign the appropriate documents. I don't want to say the wrong one. I think it's an affidavit summons, but go down and sign that and go before a judge and show them their proof. A lot of times what we face is people send us pictures, but even with a picture or video, the complainant has to show up in court to swear to the validity of that picture or video. We can't do that. We don't know if it's been modified. They just have to be there, and that's not very common for people to want to follow through. They just think if you take a picture, that the officer can operate directly from that, and unfortunately, we can't.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I have one more question, Mr. President. How you doing? I got, I think I got about two people here. Can you sit down and just talk to them briefly about what's going on?
Sure.
Actually, one that's here today, the dog attacked her mom and knocked her mom down. And by the time everybody got there, they had already moved the dog. So I would just kind of like you to just explain to them what, you know, what the process, so that they can understand what they need to do and what they can do, and what they can do to help you, so we can get these dogs that's attacked and run the street. You know, I mean, one thing I do know, whenever someone says something about them, they're gone. And I know about the trap that has to go on their land. So maybe you need to just kind of explain to them. And then I'd be more than happy to put some stuff out on the, how the ordinance is and how it's written up, so that they'll know how the process of what's going on to make sure we are taking care of our people about these dogs.
Yes, ma'am. You said that person's here tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'll be happy.
We point him out. Stand for you, you know.
Yeah. I'll be right when I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Mr. President, real quick, sorry. I just wanted to, one, say thank you, because, you know, obviously, we've had some communications, and it's been responsive. I was very glad to hear about the litter of puppies that we found on the side of the street the other day that were all rescued. And I encourage the council, if you've not had the opportunity, to meet Mr. Tears out at their facility and take a tour. It's a pretty incredible operation that we have going out there. It's way more complex than just capture and making determinations about adoptability and that, and I think that's really important. And as a plea to the public, too, a lot of it runs on volunteers and helpers that are doing work to help, you know, backfill what the staff can do out there. So, councilors, I highly encourage if you have the opportunity and time to contact Mr. Tears and take some time to go out there and see the operation, because it's pretty impressive.
Thank you, and you're all welcome in. And I need to...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tears. All right. I'm going to skip over you right now, Mr. Crawford, because I know your presentation's going to be a little longer, and I'm going to go to some people that just want to talk a little about a couple situations. Next is County Commissioner Isaiah Sankey, cable companies.
What's he doing? He's starting the cable.
Council members, Isaiah Sankey, I want to talk about the situation we have with the various telecommunications companies and the cable companies, how they are stringing cable in such a haphazard manner all throughout the city. It looks a mess. It's a lot of clutter, and I'm just hoping that at some point, we can determine who has jurisdiction over these companies and so forth, and why we allow them to continue to hang cable and not maintain the cable in a proper manner.
All right. Pause right up. Ms. Babers, did you hear the question? Do we know who have jurisdiction on enforcing and making sure that it's done in the time amount?
Yes. Commissioner Sankey had previously reached out to me, and I reached out to my team, and so we basically, we talked about permit, issuing permits. There was no permit needed for this particular situation, because there were no cuts in the asphalt or concrete. And when we talked about the hanging of them, there is nothing specific that tells us to what degree would we issue a violation for that. It is, it is a subjective thing, and so there was really nothing for us to go and do.
All right, ma'am. Okay, so my question would be, Stacy, help me now. Can this council create an ordinance that be specific on what we want to see when it comes to these cable companies? I know we can, but legally.
So what are we wanting to do? Maybe I'm not...
No, we don't want to ban them. Not like we want to ban Colorado. No, what he's asking, you know, like the hanging of them, can we set a specific height that they need to be when you're coming in and doing these type underground things of so nature? So that's what we, I know we can, but legally, what would your recommendation?
Well, they have to be hung at a certain height by statute, so I would think that traffic engineering would reach out to the appropriate utility to tell them that they have some issue.
Wesley might can answer that, CC. All right. I see somebody getting up. Come on, Wesley.
Good evening, everyone.
Your name for the record, sir?
Wesley Cox, traffic engineering director for the city.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, so Stacy's correct that, you know, there are certain heights that these cables have to be hung and have to be maintained. It varies. It's got to be higher over roadways than it does when it's not over any kind of roadway or driveway, but these poles are owned by the power company or AT&amp;T typically, and the power company determines where those lines are placed on the pole and kind of manages the heights of those based on how it interacts with their power at the top. That's right. So each of these communication companies go to the power company and sign an attachment agreement with Alabama Power to be able to attach to these poles. So that's something that's governed between those two organizations.
So what you're telling us is Alabama Power has the regulatory guidance on where that hangs on the pole and not the city of Montgomery?
They do on the actual pole. That's right. But then the power company receives a franchise agreement from the city to be able to locate their poles on the city right away.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. President. I did speak with Alabama Power months ago prior to bringing this to the city council, and they said that you all issued the franchise agreements, and so you all had authority to do something about it. So I'm really concerned about the clutter. They're hanging all on the ground. They're running through treetops. Nobody has taken time to, you know, to cut the tree to put them at the proper height. Now, there is an ordinance, 45-2009, that you all, well, you provide a franchise agreement to Interstate Fiber Incorporated. Now, that may have been a long time ago, but I would think that the language perhaps would be the same for all the franchise agreements that allow these telecommunications companies to either go underground or string things along on the pole. And so I, Section 5, Paragraph 3, Mr. President and the council members, it says of this that, let me find that for you here, please, and then I'll get out of the way. Section 5, Paragraph 3 says that, or C, rather, says that "all structures and all conduits, cables, lines, equipment, and connection in, over, under, and upon the streets, sidewalks, alleys, and public ways or place of the city, wherever situated or located, shall at all times be kept and maintained in a safe, suitable, substantial condition and in good order and repair." Now, one might have to use some interpretation, but to me, that means we ought to be concerned about how they looking and how they are cluttered on the pole and not maintained with the cable hanging on the ground and so forth. And I think you'll find that in quite a few places in the city, so hopefully, we can get together and talk about how to eliminate some of the clutter while we provide the internet and cable services to those who need and want to have them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that to our attention. We'll work with you. All right. Bathsheba Brown, Heavy Hearts, Day of Giving.
Good evening. These are all handy guys out there. Flyer. This is a packet, actually, about what we got going on. I'd like to first start off by saying, thank you for all those who support Heavy Hearts throughout the years and have done such a great, amazing job making our commitment to the community be a success. Every year, we do so many families with food drives, aftercare, family care, emergency assistance, all kind of things, but every year, you guys know, we have a big, huge program, our Heavy Hearts Day of Giving, where we help thousands of families with food, we give them toys, bikes, beds, the accessories that go with it, the wall hangings, the beds, pillows, everything, and we really assist families. But we just want to say, we want to go a step further this year, where we're not going to just do it on that one day and do a Day of Giving, but we're going to do every month, and we want to assist families every month with essential needs, from family guidance, mental health, just great activities for the family, from reading books, food, furniture, financial assistance. As you can see, you go through, every month, there's a different program that we have that will be targeting these families, that they can stay with the program, not just for one day, but they can be able to come out, and we could track families every month and their success and how they are in the community. We don't want to just be this one-stop shop where everybody comes out on Christmas and then we don't see them again anymore until the next year or the next time it's time to give. We really want to have a commitment to the community that we serve and to families, and we want to be able to track them and track their success. So we are asking for you guys to, again, partner with us, participate in it, come out, give us finances, again, to be able to support and make this program run. I put on the back of here, as the last page is, as you can see, a budget that would it cost to be able to operate this program, and it is an amazing budget. Did it myself. It's an amazing budget compared to what we ask for for just one event. Normally, we ask for this for one event, but we're asking for that for an entire year, because we have so many other partners that have come in and partnered and helped with us throughout the year, so it helped us keep costs down and it helped us to be more efficient. So we just ask that you guys be able to donate and to give, to be able to make sure that we can be able to help these families that you know definitely deserve it and need it. And again, I will be back again, asking throughout the year, every time I have a different program, I'm asking this one time, this one ask, to help us throughout the year to serve the families. And again, thank you to the ones that have donated so far and have been very essential in making our program work.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Brown? No questions? Thank you, Ms. Brown. We'll be supportive.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much. Y'all read this packet. It's a lot of information, a lot of work went into making this packet. So read and follow through, and please come out and support us, not just financially, but physically as well, too.
All right. I want you to give them a test next time you come back.
I will. I got it. I got you. No problem.
Thank you. Free save.
Thank y'all so much.
All right. Sharita Finch, Executive Director of Counseling on Sustenabees.
She's counseling.
She counseling?
She's her.
All right. Mr. Johnny Crawford, update on procurement process? Either one?
My name is Johnny Crawford. I'm the procurement director for the city of Montgomery. I was asked to be here to kind of briefly go over the procurement process, specifically the contract routing process. But a little bit about myself, if you guys don't remember, I've been the procurement director since June 2025. Before that, I served 25 years in the United States Air Force, all in the procurement contracting career field. And upon my retirement, for the last seven years of my active service career, I was authorized to sign contracts on behalf of the Air Force, up to $25 million. So, next slide. Procurement process, this is just kind of like a 30,000-foot view, but the requirement is developed at the department level, and then once it's developed, the statement of work is written, it will either go to procurement for bidding or for professional services that stays within the department. Once the bids are received, they're evaluated, well, once it goes out, the RFP and IFB is posted on our public-facing bidding site. The bids are received, they're evaluated, at that point, an award is selected, and then that's what constitutes the contract routing process where a contract routing sheet is requested. Next slide. Like I said, the contract routing sheet is mandatory for all contracts, and the department in question that is looking to receive the service, they initiate the process. Next slide. It's kind of what I really wanted to talk about was the routing process itself. I know previously, you know, that's been a topic of... the requirement is developed, uh, at the department level, and then once it's developed, the statement of work is written. It, it will either go to procurement forbidding or for professional services that stays within the department. Once the bids are received, um, they're evaluated. Well, once it goes out, the RFP and IFB is posted on our, uh, public, uh, facing, uh, bidding site. Uh, the bids are received, they're evaluated. At that point, an awardee is selected, and then that's what constitutes the contract routing process where a, a, uh, contract routing sheet is, uh, requested. Next slide. Uh, like I said, the contract routing sheet is mandatory for all contracts, and the, the department in question that is looking to receive the service, they initiate the process. Next slide. It's kinda one, what I really wanted to talk about was the routing process itself. I know, uh, previously, you know, that's been a topic of conversation, uh, was, is the routing process, so I just wanna spend a little bit of time on that. Uh, like I said, the department head initiates it, then once our contract is written and it's ready to come, go to the mayor's office for signature, it stops by my office first. At that point, I'll look at all contracts and verify compliance with Alabama bid law to make sure it is consistent and is compliant. Then the cabinet members, uh, signs it, and then it goes to the CFO. And for at the CFO level, they're assuring that funds are available for the actual contract itself. Next slide. And then it goes to the city attorney to make sure that the, uh, contract is legally sufficient before it gets to the actual mayor's office for signature. So I can say right now, within each person and the, the, the steps that it goes through, you probably have well over ninety years of experience looking at these contracts before they get to the mayor's office. So I just wanna kind of explain the process and how it all works before a contract is actually signed by the mayor. So now, I'm open for questions.
Mr. Crawford, how long does it take for your contract to go through that process that you just explained, on average?
Depending on the dollar value, the, uh, contracts can be posted out for like thirty days, uh, to give contractors the opportunity to bid on it and put together a, uh, complete and accurate bid. And then from, um, requirements development at the department level, that could take weeks, months, it depends on the complexity of the requirement. And then from the contract award process, if we write it, that can take anywhere from a week or two weeks. So there's a significant amount of time and resources that it takes to get a contract to where it's ready to go into the contract routing approval process.
Mr. President, I got a question. Mr. Crawford, uh, what's the amount? I'm gonna make sure for, if we're trying to do some, what is, what is the amount that we have to get a bids on?
Uh, thirty thousand dollars is the bid law, is the bid law amount.
Okay.
Above thirty thousand, we have to do competitive bids.
Okay.
Mr. Crawford? Uh, Mr. President?
Mr.
Uh, Mr. Crawford, and can you explain if it's a, a continuous job, what do we have to do if I'm, if I have a company that I might use the entire year? Um, can you explain to us how that process work as well?
If it's a reoccurring service, that's, I think that's what you're talking about, reoccurring, and it's for the same type of service, Alabama bid law applies. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna do the same service and it's gonna exceed thirty thousand dollars in a year, then we have to look at competing and actually getting that on the contract.
All right.
Let me ask you one. Mr. Crawford, do you handle the RFQs, RFVs?
Uh, yes, sir.
Like, last week, I see was one out for, uh, sanitation. Three of our districts prioritized the sanitation department. What's the status of that?
Well, that one actually closed. We only got one bid, but we realized there needs to be some changes in the statement of work. So we gotta work with our, uh, department heads and, uh, cabinet members to actually get that one, kinda rework till we can resolicit and put it back out for bid again to see if we can get a little bit more.
It's gonna be again, right? It's gonna be again?
Uh, yes, sir. Any more question?
Let me ask one question here. So like, let me, let me get this, a clear understanding of this. If we're going to do something in our district, such as build a pavilion, and we find somebody that can do it for X amount of dollars below thirty thousand, then we're good to go.
If possible, it's best for those particular circumstances. If it's just one quote and that's all you got, it's gotta be below ten thousand.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. It's gotta be low to ten. Okay, that's what I need to know. All right, thank you.
And then submit that via munis or something, just so when the work is complete and they invoice, there's some sort of contractual instrument in place that they can invoice against.
So anything below ten?
But anything, like, unless it's, uh, like something else that can have some kind of special pay authority or something.
That's what I need to know. All right, thank you so much.
That's good. All right. Anyone else have any question?
All right, thank you, thank you for your time.
All right. Mr. Robinson, Frank Robinson, is he still there?
Mm-hmm.
You have a question? Well, I, I just need someone.